Ten seconds on my phone. Six, seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty. Okay, it's ten o'clock. Are we ready to start? Are we ready, Hunt?
Sure.
Ready to start? Okay. I would just say good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah. And I'd like to call our August 30th County Commissioner meeting to order, but let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay. The first item on our agenda is A, the First Order of Business. So do we have bid opportunities? Oh, good. We do.
Good morning.
Okay.
Phil Garrett, offices 420 Main West, Mishwaka.
Randy James, Building Commissioner, offices at 125 South Lafayette.
We actually have no bids this morning, so we'll inform the Commissioners that we're going to talk. Either we will rebid or move under the Special Purchasing Statute to move forward with separate contracts.
Oh, so we didn't get any bids, huh?
No bids received, no.
Okay.
I can inform you, though, out of the twelve we started with, all but three have been resolved. Any other questions?
May I speak on this topic?
Yes, I know that you had wanted to. So you want to come up here and speak?
Hello, I'm Tom Evans, Evans Building Group. I want to say that we put in for demolition of this property June 18th of 2021. It's the property on Guernsey Avenue. And I've been told repeatedly that we have to go through due process. And it's a year and a half now. And I also called ahead to see if there were any bids. And at that time, I was told, "We always had bids. Don't worry about it. I myself can get bids if we need them." But this is another, probably another 21-day, you know, delay on waiting for bids. And I feel that is unjustifiable. And a year and a half, I think, is long enough time to go through due process. I think that something should be done. And if you don't have bids, notify me, and I will get you bids.
Oh, well, thank you. Thank you for letting us know. Appreciate it. Any other comments today?
Any follow-up questions?
Yeah. None? No more?
Did you want to add something to that?
No, it's, we have a statutory procedure we have to follow. That was followed. We can make contractors place bids. But we do have other options that we could follow up to get these matters taken care of. And we'll discuss those.
All righty.
Thank you.
I just want to reiterate, we did resolve nine out of 12 issues, property issues. We couldn't get the one that Mr. Evans wanted, but it will definitely happen.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. All righty. So the next items on our agenda is the reports and requests formed. First is our Commissioners. And A is election of President. Do we have a motion to open nomination for President?
I'd like to nominate myself, Derek Dieter, for President.
I thought we just had to be the nomination to do the President.
We could do a motion to open nominations.
Right, that was, that's what I thought. That's what I asked for. So is there a motion for?
I'll make a motion that we open nominations for President.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right, the nominations are open. Any nominations?
I will nominate myself.
So we want to just not follow up with that?
Any other nominations? And if not, then we close nominations.
Well, we can close his. And then we'll have another nomination that I would like to nominate Carl Baxmeyer for President. Because I just, I know a lot of people assume that I would like to take on the presidency because I am now the longest-serving member of the Board. However, as you know, the President position comes with additional responsibilities that I'd rather not take on right, due, now, due to my other professional and family obligations. Instead, I'd like to see Carl Baxmeyer become our new President. He may be new to the Board, but he has an extensive history working on planning projects, both the government and the private sector. His impressive background, leadership qualities, and reputation as a consensus builder will serve him well in the position. So I am nominating Carl Baxmeyer.
I'll second that.
Well, Deb, the point of order here would be you would close nominations if there's no further nominations, and then we'll take a vote.
Okay.
Point of order, may I ask Mr. Baxmeyer some questions?
Let's close the nominations, and then we can have discussion.
We'll close it, and we'll close the nomination as a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Now would be time for comment discussion.
Thanks, Frank. Mr. Baxmeyer, have you ever?
Hello, hello.
Have you ever been elected to a political office?
Hey, wait up, it's against making fun. Oh, 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 oh. You fucking n***.
Have you ever been elected to a political office?
I have not.
And what have you run for?
I have run for Mayor.
And you lost?
Yes. I've run for United States Representative.
And you lost?
Yes. And I've run for State Representative.
And you lost?
Correct.
Okay. And apparently, you were just caucused in by the Republican Party on a Saturday, just this past Saturday as the Commissioner. Congratulations, correct?
Thank you, but the caucus was actually held on July 6th.
Okay, but you were sworn in Saturday, correct?
That's correct.
Correct again, okay. So in the event of never being elected by the people who we serve, and in a matter of three days, what makes you think you can be an effective President of the County Commissioners?
I didn't realize that this was a interrogation, but to respond to your question, many people have taken elected office for the first time. I have worked in county government with state governments.
Have any of the people that have been put into office, this is my question, then been naming themselves President within three days?
I did not make the motion. That was made by Commissioner Fleming.
And you seconded it?
I did.
Okay, you had some other stuff you wanted to say?
No, not this time.
Well, here we go again. The people, again, have not spoken on this, which has happened a lot, unfortunately, in government, and that, all the good things that we are doing or had been doing in county government, which is quite extensive, working with the Council. And now, we're going to get back into the, just one of the bad things that I despise about politics of this type of stuff, of appointing someone who's never been elected, ran three times for major election, never been elected by the people, suddenly is caucused in, and then this stuff happens of being appointed to President. So very disappointing this goes this way. I feel bad for all the people in county government that we've been working with collectively. And it's sad where people hold grudges and play all this, I'll keep it clean, Mr. Mish, games that goes on that you don't, because somebody may be a different party and you work with them, that you're chastised for working with somebody from a different party is insane. And this is the kind of garbage that goes on in government that makes only 10% to 12% of the people come out to vote. This what happens in this building when we have a lot of fantastic employees working hard every day, and the elected officials are trying to improve this. And now, we're going to pull that curtain and go down another road of similar to the over half a million dollars was spent on the voting, redistricting, and now this is going to happen. So it's up to the people to decide if they want this kind of stuff to go on. But again, it's another, it's a sad day in St. Joe County Government where somebody is sworn in as a Commissioner and three days later is appointed as the President. So these are the two that did it. Those are your representatives. That's all I have to say at this time, Mr. Mish.
If I may. One of the key things about being a Commissioner, whether it's President or as a member, is building consensus and working with all of the people in county government. The length of time that you have served has nothing to do with it. I believe in building consensus. I didn't send out a press release three days ago, four days ago, anointing myself as President. That doesn't show leadership. And that shows that disrespect for the other members of the Board. And with that, I have nothing further to add.
I'd love a rebuttal to that. Didn't you and Commissioner, then Commissioner Castelni talk, and you said you would support me for President?
I never said that.
So Andy lied?
I have no comment on what Andy told you.
Okay, so in the President, presence of Andy Castelni and our attorney, Mr. Mish, didn't you say you would support me as the President?
I never said that.
Well, and I'd be looking forward.
Mr. Mish, could you allude to that one?
I cannot.
Right. And I just want to, this is going to be good because we could work together and do the right thing and help people. So I just love doing that. Unfortunately, I couldn't do it myself anymore, but we can work together. Yay. So I really, really, really appreciate that because I love helping people, and I want to make sure we're helping people everywhere. So that's what I'm looking forward to, so.
One more question. Could we get public comment during this portion?
No. No public comments.
You're not going to let the public speak on this matter?
No, we cannot.
So privilege of the floor, people could speak?
No. You told me no, right?
It's up to you, or there can be a motion, and with a second, if the President does not want to adjust the agenda.
I'd like, well, we have to get to the part first, right?
You can make a motion.
Well, I make a motion now that public input should be taken during this time?
With no second, the motion fails?
Yes.
Do you want to call for a vote on?
Yes. I'd like to call motion to vote for the presidency.
I'll second that.
Well, who are you voting for? A motion to elect who as President is the motion we're looking for?
Well, the motion that I'm electing for is Carl Baxmeyer, which I had recommended that.
Now I will second that.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
I'll go nay.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye, yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. You want to switch over here?
I think, no, why don't you just stay? There's no need to switch places. I would like to, we can take care of that. I think it's appropriate that we make a motion to retain Deb Fleming as Vice President of the Board of Commissioners.
Just so you know, that's not necessary. That's not something that's up for vote because there was no vacancy. And unless there's a motion to remove her, and then that gets seconded, then we would have an open vacancy to replace.
Then I will remove that motion. Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is the Accounts Payable Docket. Is there a motion?
I second that. Or approve it, I should say, not second. Motion to approve the Accounts Payable Docket.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Could you tell me what's in the Accounts Payable Docket?
All of those, is that down there?
That was provo, oh, and then here.
Yeah. It's at the back there.
Yep.
And the accounts at the back are all these things here. Every vote at the end, every sign at the end that they give us.
Thank you. I didn't realize it was at the end. Yes, Commissioner Dieter, that is all of the accounts payable that have been submitted to the County. Any further questions? Deb, did you make, you made a come, motion to approve.
Motion to approve, uh-huh.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Vote aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is, on the agenda is Appointment to the Redevelopment Commission.
Open nominations for the?
Yeah, we got point of order before that?
Absolutely.
I would like to make a recommendation because this is something we had talked about before when we do appointments in the past. I guess, I don't know, it's, I guess, making a motion now or that we, before we make any other appointments, we ask applicants to get a resume and then have a letter of intent to why they're applying for such a Board because we appoint a lot of people on Boards. And there's always been the question of why did you appoint this person? And I think it should be done where we have a resume, we have a letter of intent, just in lieu of appointing somebody because you like them or they'll vote the way we want to. So I guess I would put a motion to table that until the Commissioners can come up with a proper procedure so it's fair and equitable for everybody to put in for a Board that we would look at resumes and a letter of intent that we would vote for people.
I don't feel that it's appropriate at this time to table this. There's too much going on with redevelopment and with new development proposed for the County. And tabling this would further delay that effort. I think we need to move ahead and fill that vacancy that was created when I assumed the position of Commissioner.
So we need a nomination?
We need a nomination.
Hold on, is there, he's got a motion, so is there a second for the motion? So then the motion fails for lack of second. Then Carl, if you want to open nominations?
I will open nominations for the Appointment to the Redevelopment Commission.
I would nominate Josh Goble.
I will second that.
Is there?
Any discussion?
If there's no other nominations, we'll close nominations and then have discussion.
Okay, the nominations are closed now. Motion to nominate Josh.
Nominate, motion to.
We had to close, we had to close the other.
Is there a second for the motion to nominate Josh Goble?
I'll second that.
Well, you made the motion.
We have gotten off to a bad start here on this. Derek made a motion to table it.
That died.
That died.
We close nominations with one nominee.
Now we need, do we, we need a motion on the floor.
You made the motion to nominate Josh. Is there a second?
Is there a second?
Well, I nominate, I'll second that.
Okay. The motion has been made and seconded that Josh Goble be appointed to the Redevelopment Commission.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Do you have a question?
Yeah.
I don't want to put Josh in the middle of all this. So normally, you know me, there would have been a lot more discussion, so I'm not going to do that to Josh. So. You asking me if I'm voting for Josh?
I'm asking you if you vote.
If he goes back to the crew cut, yes.
Okay. Will you go back to the crew cut? Oh, well. Sounds like a no then. Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
I'm still, I'll still vote for Josh.
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Josh has been nominated.
Next item on the agenda is the Approval of the B4 Time Upgrades for Portage Manor. Does somebody wish to speak at all on that? Mr. Butler.
I'm John Butler, Project Manager for the County Auditor on the second floor in the County City Building. What before you is the Proposal to Upgrade the B4 Time System, specifically for Portage Manor, including upgrading the tech for their time clock and moving from an on-premise to a cloud-hosted environment. Did anyone have any questions on what this involves or anything that I can answer?
It's my understanding that Portage Manor was on the B4 Time System before the rest of the County went to Kronos?
Correct. They've been on the B4 Time System for a number of years. One of our earliest departments to get on electronic timekeeping. We'd simply be upgrading the technologies to something out of the 90s.
Any other questions?
No, I think it's going to help. I think it's going to be nice, so, yeah.
It would be much more convenient for both the Administration and for the Auditor's Office to consolidate these onto a platform we can access.
Any further discussion, questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve the upgrade to the B4 Time System?
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Next, we have the Approval for the Contract for AccuShield with Portage Manor.
Hello.
Good morning.
I'm Courtney. I'm the Administrator for Portage Manor. So this system is going to replace a physical person that the County currently pays for at the door of Portage Manor. State requirements that people be checked for COVID symptoms and temperature upon entering into a healthcare facility. This machine will save the American Rescue Fund between $9,000 and $10,000 a month to be able to be put back into it for a one-time cost of roughly $3,800 and a maintenance fee of $250 a month.
Any questions from the other Board members? I think this is a positive step, and it certainly saves considerable dollars.
Mm-hmm. Yep, that's what I'm thinking, too. Yes.
If there's no further questions, do we have a motion to approve?
Yeah, there's a motion to approve the contract with the AccuShield.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Fleming, how do you vote? Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I'll second it.
Thank you. Mr. Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next is Human Resources. Approval for an Administrative Services Agreement Addendum E with the JWF Specialty Company.
Good morning. Kim Karkowitz, Human Resource Director, St. Joseph County. Offices on the seventh floor of this building. The request that we have is to extend our contract with JWF Specialty, which is our third-party administrator for our liability and workers' comp. We are self-funded for these programs, and these funds are ones that the HR Department is responsible for. JWF helps us in the process of claims. We did a bid, and we did meet with multiple providers for the TPA with our safety team that included our Safety Risk Manager and our Investigator. And we did follow up with them and decided that it would be best for the County to move forward the continued relationship with JWF. JWF also provides these services to other local entities like the City of South Bend and the City of Elkhart, so.
Any questions or comments for Kim?
I just want to say I think it's always done a nice job for us and people, so, good.
Commissioner Dieter, do you have anything to add? If not, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the service agreement with the JWF Specialty Company.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is for Infrastructure Planning and Growth. The first item is the Consent Agenda. We only have one item on that. That's the Special Events Request for the Silver Mile 5K Run for Penn Harris Madison. Entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Next is the Project Honeysuckle Road Use Agreement. Mr. Brown?
Good morning, Commissioners. Christian Brown, Economic Development Specialist, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth. Offices on the seventh and 11th floors of this building. Before you is a road use agreement for Project Honeysuckle. This agreement governs the utilization of county roads during the duration of the construction phase of the project. So it includes installation and improvement of access road driveways and the ability to cross county roads with underground cables based off of the design that the County Engineer would review and approve. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. And Sky Matters is also available if you have any questions.
Are there any questions from the Commissioners? If not, entertain a motion to approve the, excuse me, Project Honeysuckle Road Use Agreement.
I'll have a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm excited.
The next two items, the Approval of Contract Change Orders has been tabled on the request of the Department to address some technical issues. Mr. Shalio, do you want to address that at all?
Those actually aren't my issues. I was walking up early for the next item, so.
Right.
Okay. I thought maybe you wanted to say something on that.
Nope, nope.
So do we have a motion to table those two items?
I'll motion to table those two items.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Now on to the item to which you approach the podium.
I'm not sure if this needs to be untabled.
We do have to untable it.
Okay.
So first, we'll entertain a motion to?
Take it off the table.
Take it off the table.
Motion to take it off the table.
Second?
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Good morning. Bill Shalio, Economic Development Director, part of Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth with offices on the seventh and 11th floor. Before you today is a contract extension with the South Bend Regional Chamber to provide additional economic development services. The service agreement is revised from one that was approved late last year. That contract was for a three-year service period. This one would extend to 2028. In addition to extending the term, we would also change the payment structure in the last four years so that the last four years would see an increase for cost and services provided. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I would note that the Redevelopment Commission previously approved their agreement at their meeting on August 9th.
Any comments or questions? If not, I would just like to add, I think we get a tremendous service through the cooperation with the Chamber of Commerce and Infrastructure Planning and Growth. I think it's a value for the money that we are investing in that. And I would look for a, if there's no other comment, look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
And with that, we have reached the public comments time.
Just a reminder, public comments, three minutes, strictly enforced, no matter how beautiful your poetry is. And we'll address our people in the room first. It's an information-taking session, not necessarily a dialogue. Go ahead, Dan.
Thank you. Dan Caruso, 305 Compton Street, New Carlyle. What we have just witnessed is party politics, not good governance. How disgusting. I would sure hope that when it comes to the land development, the proposed land development, the battery plant in New Carlyle, in my backyard, that there would be more consideration for what the people want, what, that we want to be included in decisions, that we don't want to have our input overridden by somebody who is told to do something by their party. We want input. This is too dangerous for the future of our future generations. We know too little about this battery plant, of what the procedure is, what their waste product is, how they handle it, what it could do to our aquifer. Mr. Filet, at the council meeting indicated, "All we need is jobs. All we need is jobs. We need bodies in here. We need, we need to grow." It doesn't matter if you grow. If you can't drink the water, the animals can't drink the water, the plants can't use the water to grow, we're all gonna die. We have to vet this project properly and thoroughly, and I just don't understand why we can't wait until there is a new comprehensive land use plan in place. What is the big rush? We need to vet this project. I understand there are some issues with the promise to let labor decide whether or not they organize inside the plant. I understand that is going on in Ohio right now, that there are some issues. Did somebody say something? I heard. Okay, I'm hearing things. I just, to rush things through is unnecessary. If they find a better place to go, go. We want to make sure you're good for the area, you're good for, to bring 1,700 people, effectively doubling the size of New Carlyle, into one location, is just crazy. It's gonna be over, will be overrun by fast food restaurants, strip malls. You will not recognize New Carlyle. The growth needs to morph into New Carlyle, not vice versa. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Deborah Durell, 21677 Autton Road, South Bend. Thank you for your work this morning. I'm here this morning to share that a couple weeks ago, I was working with students and volunteers on the St. Mary's College Sustainable Farm. And I was sharing with them what I've been doing, coming to these meetings and reading these kinds of writings, and trying to bring both community and environmental issues into the discussion here. And they directed me to a writer that they are very admiring of, and that writer is Mary Oliver. I did look her up and got one of her books, and I'm going to read one of the poems this morning. Meadowlark, when you sing, it's as if you lay your yellow breast upon mine and say, "Hello, hello." And are we not of one family in our delight of life? You sing, I listen. Both are necessary if the world is to continue going around. Night-heavy, then light-laden, though not everyone knows this, or at least not yet, or perhaps, has forgotten it in the torn fields and the terrible debris of progress. The brownfields that we have here in St. Joseph County are such debris. And in light of the money that is being spent on marketing and creating codes for the IEC overlay and consultants, and in the interest of creating jobs to help our economy, and justifying that kind of creation on precious land and resources that we are still fighting to preserve, that has been long recognized, not only locally but by the nation, is a serious oversight. If we can have code enforcement and fines and regulations to force property owners to allow us to clean up debris and unkept yards, then we should be able to take advantage of grant money that, and TIF money that is being created, to clean up and encourage those property owners to allow access and stop using brownfields as justification for putting development on precious other land. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else here in the room wish to speak?
My name is Paul Blom. I live at 52682 Kermit Road in Granger. I'd like to speak in behalf of my friend Derek Dieter. I was a special education teacher for 25 years at Clay Middle School. And my principal once said to me, "You know, Paul, kids who are teammates are friends forever." And I thought of that this morning when I woke up and I knew I was gonna come down and say something for Mr. Dieter. I've seen Mr. Dieter be involved in sports. None of my champion wrestlers ever beat one of his kids. They were tough as nails, smart as a can be. And I looked up to him, and that's a testament to their dad's persistence and good character. I always remember that phrase, "Friends forever." If you're on the same team. And I believe that Derek Dieter is on the team, St. Joe County, and he'll be a friend to everybody, because he's proven that all along, as far as I can see. So, I want to just give a nod and say thank you to Derek Dieter.
Is this permission to the floor?
It is.
Okay. I'm a pastor, and I always tell people I was a Marine before I was a pastor, so I always have to pray before I speak.
Mr. Sims, can you state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, my name is Pastor Mario Sims. I'm senior pastor of Dulles Chapel, 608 South St. Joseph Street in South Bend, Indiana. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit troubled this morning, to say the least. As you can see, I'm a Marine Corps veteran. As veterans, we, since 1775, a year before this country started, have provided the blanket of protection for everything that's done in America. Men and women serve today, putting their lives at risk to provide democracy and for this great republic. Unfortunately, and I've been an activist for 30 years, the republic is not well here in St. Joe County. Media coverage is censored. Truth is covered up. I've known Derek now, since he was an officer patrolling my neighborhood since late 1980s. And Derek was one of these people that he stood for what's right at great cost and great expense. I'm sure it cost him promotions in the South Bend Police Department. He didn't care. He just did what the right thing was. A couple years ago, it came to light that a law enforcement officer in South Bend had admitted to planting evidence to a reporter. And then the reporter reported that to Derek. Pat Katrell made a police report. That reporter's life was threatened by that law enforcement officer, no media coverage, but Derek stood up. Derek stood up at great cost. No one else did. No one else did. This is a republic. This is a democracy. This, but that's the only elected official that said, "That's wrong. I heard it," and the rest is crickets. I, I, I'm beyond, and I know Mr. Baxmeyer, I've known Carl. I think I met in 1992 at a Lincoln Day dinner. I'm just concerned about a process that does not recognize someone who has put his life, his reputation, on the line for this community. I thank God for him. I thank God for Derek, because Derek is the one person that, when people were saying, you know, "You know about Mario Derek," it's like, no, the guy, you know, he was set up. He said that, when no other, no other elected official would say that. He said that. He should be easily nominated to be the president of the Commissioners. I, I, I'm heartbroken. I'm really upset. But, but as a pastor, I, the Jesus in me can restrain the emotions I feel. But I, I, I don't, I don't know what to say. I, I don't know what to say, other than just to say what I said.
Time is up, Mr. Sims. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, folks. My name is Dave Varner. I reside at 1306 Clayton Drive. I think I may be one of the few people in the room who can address all of you as acquaintances, and more than acquaintances, as friends, because of the relationships we've had over the past. I came here to speak in favor of Derek this morning, because I had 12 years to work with him on the city council. I didn't come to speak against Carl. I didn't know Carl was gonna be nominated. I think that, looking at this, we've got some pretty good people sitting on this, Commissioners, not Council Commissioners, now. What I just, found disappointing was, was the discord, perhaps. I don't think discord is a good look for any organization. So, I would hope that after the meeting, everybody sits down, takes a deep breath, talks about what you want to do with the county in the future. I think we have some good opportunities. I think we have some good leadership. I think everybody's gonna get their chance to do the things that they think they need or necessary. And then, with that said, I'd also like to make one other comment. The gentleman regarding the, and the young lady regarding the, the potential battery plant. I think vetting is incredibly important, and I agree. I'd like to know what the waste products are, some of the byproducts are. But in some instances, vetting can turn into a different version of obstruction. I think we need to get those answers to the questions. And if we can find a way to make it work, I'm all in favor of the growth and development. If you look at the census data for this community, and I understand Carl is pretty much an expert on census data, as long as I've been around in this county, there hasn't been a whole lot of growth. There's been some losses, there've been some gains. There hasn't been a lot of positive economic growth. We need some of that. And if we can find a way to do it, I think it'd be a good idea. I think we need to address some of those questions, so. Last thing, as a member of the city council, I was on the short end of so many votes, I can't hardly tell you what it was like. But it was 20 years. We always found a way after that to get along, to work hard, to get the things done that the city needed, to the best we could. So, I wish you all well in your positions today. Who knows what the future brings, but I hope this all turns out best for St. Joseph County, as well as the individuals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Roosevelt Stewart. I also, myself, is a pastor, 3006 Armore Trail. I agree with this pastor here. Just, it wasn't so welcoming to come in here and see what, witness what we seen. I mean, if Ray Charles was sitting right here, he would probably see, see the same thing. It seemed as if there's some favoritism there going on. I just gotta speak in truth. Seemed as if some, some favoritism going on. Derek Dieter is more than qualified for that office, just by what he's shown in our community. We was not able to even have any input or anything like that. But I've watched Derek Dieter. He stayed on the north side. He stayed not too far from me. And I wasn't always a good boy. And, but he would, he would, when he was in his, when he, in his office as an officer, he didn't treat it as an office. He looked at it as a father. He gave the father advice, outside of his badge, a brother's advice, an uncle's advice. And he just stick, he stood with the community and took great risks. And just, just been awesome at, at his office. Even took pay cuts just to stay within those means. I don't know really much about you. I hope you do have the best for this county, since you was single-handedly placed in there. We kinda seen that. But I just really hope you just have the best for this community. Mr. Dieter, it takes a great man to, to endure what you have endured. I done seen you shot down many times, but you just never stopped the race. I just pray that you continue to go on and move forward and keep the faith. Peace.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Edward Endress, 60750 Elm Road. Deb, you're my Commissioner, I believe, on Elm Road, next to Grissom Middle School. I'm a local businessman. A lot of you know who I am. And I, I love living in St. Joe County, despite some of the challenges and stuff. But my kids didn't. My kids all moved away. And so, I, as I look at St. Joe County and running a business here, as much as I love, and I have sunk deep roots, I'm never going, I'm gonna be buried in St. Joe County. I just hope for the future of this, of the county. I met you for the first time today, Carl. You seem like a very nice guy, Deb. I don't know that I met you, but I've always appreciated you here, especially sometimes you've opened in prayer. And I've known Carl, he's always been, or, sorry, Derek, he's always been a firebrand. But I'm a bit of a firebrand, so that's okay, too. So, anyway, I just wish you all the best of luck in that regard. But I don't like the fact that my kids did not want to put down roots in South Bend, that they all wanted to move away. And they're all very talented people. So, it's just one of those things that we should keep in mind. I'm hearing for the first time about this thing up in New Carlyle, and while it doesn't have the potential to affect me, I wonder where they're gonna find 1,700 people to come and work in, 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 in the county. So, and even though I run a business that's considered to be what it is, I actually pay very well for what we, for what we do. So, it is what it is. Anyway, thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the room wish to speak?
Good morning. My name's Kevin Connery. I live at 51291 Hidden Pines Court, Granger, Indiana. What I saw here today was, I didn't expect to see what, what happened here this morning. I, I feel for you, Derek. The fact of the matter is, is I'm running for, I'm running for one of those seats up there, as an independent. I came in, went to redistricting, and tried to get in, and they wouldn't allow me in. The party would not allow me in, because I vote for the person and not the party. So, what I saw today was all party-line stuff. It's not about the, it's not about due process. And just very disappointing, but that's one of the reasons that I'm running for office. I thank you for the time.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? If not, we will move to our friends on the video call. Does anybody there wish to speak? I see none.
I would like to comment before we conclude. I would just like to say, I view the life and everything I do from a different prism than probably everybody in this room. And most people have never seen that type of thing. Been serving the community since 1975. I still live on Portage Avenue, and like Roosevelt, who left, still work with people and do things in that area. What we have here, quote from a famous movie, by the way, is, again, I alluded to earlier, the politics, which turns everybody off. If these people would be honest, they would tell you that they got heat from the Republican Party not to make sure that I'd be the president, okay? So, everybody that's in here and all the stuff we've done so far in the year, and whatever seven, eight months I've been here, is quite immense of fixing things that had been done under other leadership. So, I can't account for them, but I can account under other leadership, so I can't account for them, but I can account for the stuff that we have done so far. Again, the prison that I lead my life from is one Josh and his wife would understand, because they, they were in that line of work, but I've dealt with kids that I've coached, who I had to go to their house after their daughter was murdered, his daughter was murdered, and he's sitting in the living room with 12 guns and rifles and shotguns, that he's going to go kill the guy that killed his daughter, and he was locked in. And after discussion of telling him, "That's not the way to go, the courts will take care of him, somebody will," he pointed his guns at me and said, "F it, I'm going to shoot you, and I'm going to shoot myself." So that has happened specifically to me more than once, all this political crap that goes on, it, it's troublesome to me because it hurts the public, it hurts the people who work in this building, and it hurts the well-good for what happens in St. Joe County, okay? I'll keep doing what I'm doing in the community, so all this, well, if somebody doesn't like you because you're aggressive and you're mean and you're whatever, I don't care about that, okay? I care about the Roosevelts and the people who come in, I care about the kids that I have coached and done stuff with, who, a family who, I went and found a son that was missing, who was found, he hung himself in Memorial Park. So after the funeral and the stuff, his brother called me, and he wanted to kill himself, so I met with him, I said, "What's the problem?" Well, growing up, their father, in any orifice they had, he stuck stuff in. And that happened to the brother, two sisters, and a stepbrother. And the young man who hung himself, who I took twice to Denver for soccer, was hearing noises, and he blamed himself for the stuff that his sick father did to him. So that's what I deal with, and sometimes the politicians get to that extent, that that's how moronic they act when we're doing good stuff, so if people need to do it because people in the party are upset, so be it, okay? Do what you want to do, which is evident here, the people didn't make a vote for this, these people did. So I'll just keep on doing what I'm doing to the community, and keep on working for the things that are right and not this political line stuff. I am done.
With no further comment, we will entertain a motion to recess.
So moved.
Second?
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.